Okay. Let's get going, I guess. The first thing is call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is approve the regular agenda of the special council meeting, budget meeting number four.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Maggie Bass, second by Bruce Wolf. If there's no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Three zero, it passes, so that's discussed. Budget discussion number four, I guess we kind of answered the personnel part.
Correct. So yeah, I guess as we put this together, we did have that included in the budget. We did make that change, if you remember at the last meeting.
Right.
That we didn't have that revenue in there. So with that in there, our proposed tax levy is currently sitting at five million, six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five, which is about a five point four, six percent increase over the 2025 levy, with an average impact to residents of four point one five percent. Of note, I know as we discussed previously, that average residential owner impact was a Scott County number, and I did work extensively with both the La Sure County city admini- county administrator and their treasurer to get numbers on the La Sure County side, so that number actually does stretch across the city in terms of both Scott and La Sure Counties. So I can certainly stand for any questions you may have, but.
What was, was it the same percentage the last time?
Uh, we're like five point eight.
Okay.
Yeah, so the twenty thousand dollars did bring it down.
Okay.
Just under five point five and brought the residential impact down about the same percentage.
Okay.
Yeah, so at this point, I don't have really any other questions that I'm looking for. I guess I'm looking for guidance one way or the other as to whether there's certainly things that you guys would like to see specifically, or whether we can start really working on the enterprise funds at this point.
I did notice in admin and planning, health insurance was down. Is that, we have some people?
Yeah, so we've had some other staff inquire about that as well. So it's just based on different staff and different positions and different elections right now.
Okay. And then in planning, a professional service, did we have a big project this year or something? We had sixty thousand.
Yeah, we had our uniform development code update.
Okay, so that was.
Going to be done.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And I did mention to Robin that the golf course does have a new CIP that we are going to approve as a board a couple of weeks.
A week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow, yes.
Yep, so yeah, my plan is to bring back all of the, all of the enterprise funds, golf, water, sewer, electric, at the second meeting in November.
Yep.
To kind of give their yearly presentations and go over quickly over their budgets. That way, if you guys want to see any changes, we can certainly do so before final budgets are approved at the end of December.
Yeah, a week from tomorrow, we're going to do a special budget meeting for the golf, and at that point, I think we're going to come up with the new rates for green fees and cart fees and memberships. So that should be all coming to the council, I assume.
Correct, yeah, that'd be that November seventeen meeting.
So that's our goal for the Gulf Board. So there's no way you can get me under five, huh?
I mean, there's always a way. If that's really where you guys want to get, we will find a way to get there.
So can you explain exactly what changed from the last iteration?
Yes, so if you remember right, the park board, oh, city council wanted to see a lower park board amount. So that park board, and certainly Maggie or Brian can correct me since they're both on the park board. Park board, it was at a hundred and ten thousand, and council asked for a lower number, so the park board went back. They said, okay, we will cut it down to forty-five thousand for the cement out at the skating rink for pickleball in the summer and hopefully hold ice longer in the winter. And then, or I believe it's twenty thousand, correct?
Forty.
Or forty, forty and twenty, correct? So then they also had twenty that they were going to dip into for the park equipment.
Yes, and those got, those projects they pushed off to, well, one twenty thousand, they pushed off to twenty twenty-seven, the other one, they just pushed to the park equipment fund.
So, so the difference between our last budget meeting here two weeks ago and this meeting was that we had the expense for the twenty thousand listed, but we forgot to balance it on the revenue side. And so the overall taxes, the tax levy came down twenty thousand when we balanced out that revenue since it was coming from the park equipment fund and not the tax levy.
But that's the only change?
That was the only change.
Wasn't there other issues we talked about besides that?
I think most of it was, the comp was.
I'd, I'd say going into the last meeting, we'd, so the change, changes since the levy approval back in September, we'd had, kind of trying to estimate the utilities for the new police building who are included in here, moving over the ambulance fees, which actually slightly lowered the levy a little bit since we'd taken a little bit more from lease than we have spent generally monthly on the ambulance building. And it was a couple of small changes like that that we had made going from the September preliminary levy to that first October meeting.
So twenty thousand, thousand to reduce it from five point eight four to five point four six?
Correct.
And then just a curiosity question, I know the fitness center, the numbers, it's hard for me to see. Did they, the fact that we'd no longer pay that thirteen thousand a year, that got adjusted?
So yeah, basically, they have, according to the school district, they have, when Craig Most retired, instead of rehiring somebody directly into his position, they kind of reallocated the duties and the pay accordingly. So it didn't, it didn't really reduce our overall amount over there by his retiring. It just kind of paying, shifted to two or three other people instead of just paying.
What I was referring to is, we had that agreement to pay, I think it was thirteen thousand dollars a year for ten years or something like that.
For the equipment?
This was our last year.
Correct. Yep.
These numbers reflect that we're not going to pay that next year.
Right.
But the increase here is already considering we're not going to pay that.
Yes.
No longer have to pay that thirteen thousand.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
The increase is just for our half portion of.
The operation.
Correct.
Dedicated operations.
From one forty to one seventy-three.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the thirteen is coming.
Did you get page eighteen?
Right, but it's a total number, that's why you can't see.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Oh, sorry, did something get cut off?
No, he's just referring to the individual.
If it's in there or not.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Oh, as I mentioned last time, I'm not supportive of the government building a hundred thousand dollars unless it's being set aside for to mitigate a spike in the.
And yeah, I mean, I think that's certainly something we, we can go forward and look at. I know as you look at all of that, I mean, I know the city, city council kind of before the project started a little bit said, hey, we'd like to use cash for some of this to offset future levies as much as possible. And I think that, I mean, we'd be pulling from that exact fund that that money would be going into. And so if that's something the city council says, hey, let's just move this over to all offset levy stuff, we certainly can do that too.
And the other issue, I think we maybe danced around a little bit, is just what we project the end of this year to be. If we feel that we kind of have additional interest income that we didn't anticipate. And also, there's one other category that I thought that were way over budget as far as revenue this year that I'd rather see us use some of that and get a lower levy amount.
Well, I think interest income, I think you increased it by almost eleven thousand.
Remember, interest income from this year that were over.
Right, but yeah, it's two hundred and seventy-seven through August, and I don't know what.
Yeah, we'll be over budget this year for revenues for interest income. Our conversations, if I recall correctly, in the past is, while we can forecast it, and certainly our investments, we don't want to put it as a continued assumed item in the budget so that in future years, all of a sudden, we don't have those returns on our money.
I totally agree with that. I don't have any question about that.
Yeah.
And I don't have any question about next year's budget as far as your projections for it. But this year, within two months, we'll know that we're going to be over budget. We're going to have excess that we didn't anticipate, in two categories at least. And to use that money for next year's budget to reduce the model levy for next year.
And so, yeah, I actually, that was a conversation that I would like to have with you guys, knowing that we're already starting to see that future interest income start to drop off three and four years from now as we're trying to invest and basically capture as much as possible before we lose it. Using some of that overages year over year, just to slide into the, say, the police fund to help offset the overall levy cost of that just generally. Trying to reduce that down. And so there's certainly decisions every year that are made of, you got a little extra money, what do you want to do with it? Well, sometimes the auditors tell us, you just have to keep it there because we have to offset fifty percent of the operating levy. But yeah, I mean, there's been other times, as we've said, that we've put it towards the fire pension emergency fund, I guess you could call it, or we have one.
Retirement fund.
Yeah, their, yeah, their pension fund, which we haven't had to pay out now for fifteen years. But in case the day comes when we have to, that money is already set aside and ready to go. So I think that, that was a conversation I had, wanted to have with you guys as we have this interest overage here for the next couple of years, what we want to do with that without directly budgeting for it, that will help offset future levies.
I mean, you bring up a good point, I'm not sure I understand the wiggling here with the pension projection, but we're projecting to expense off that next year in the budget, correct?
The, what's that?
The pension allocation contribution.
No, so.
Or aren't we?
I, I think it was last year, we had, we had some overage, and we had discussed with that overage, I think it was during one of the budget meetings, that hey, was it two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven, when we had to, the fire pension went below their state requirements of being able to meet ninety percent payout. Cities then are required to make up the difference of that. And I, I wasn't here, I'm guess, I think maybe Ken remembers, since he's the resident historian, that we probably had to pay like fifty thousand dollars into the state to, or into the pension fund to make that hole back to ninety percent. Well, numbers have been very, very good since the last fifteen years, been well managed. In fact, we've been able to give our firefighters raises, which I think is actually a great use of the money, quite frankly, because we can't use it for anything else, and so there's no point in funding a pension at a hundred and fifty percent or something like that. And so we usually, we've generally kept our pension right around a hundred and five, a hundred and ten percent fully funded. But we did in twenty twenty-four, then twenty twenty-four, we took, I believe it was forty thousand dollars, if you end up pulling up the sheet, I'm not asking you to, it was about forty thousand dollars that we said, okay, we are going to allocate and set that aside in case the day comes when for some reason that gets underfunded and the city has to pay back to make that hole to being ninety percent funded. We won't have to cut into our budget, we already have that emergency fund sitting there as a just in case.
So next year's budget, we have no expense for allocation for?
Correct, we, yeah, we have not, we have not budgeted and allocated expense towards them in fifteen years, I believe.
Okay, great.
We do it with surplus?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was the surplus the one year, but other than that, that pension fund is generally paid as a pass through. So we budget every year a hundred thousand dollars. Last couple of years, it's coming a little bit high, but basically, I think last year the state.
Sixty thousand.
Sixty, okay, last year the state, say last year, the state wrote us a check for a hundred and eight thousand dollars. We are then required just to basically as a pass through as a hundred and eight thousand dollars directly into the pension fund. So their pension fund is fully funded ours as New Prague by the state. Some cities do a little bit differently, they do put extra money in there, but we fund ours fully with the state funding.
So we do have any in the budget, but it's a pass through, so it doesn't really affect any numbers.
Correct.
Except if it's way out, then we have to make.
It, yeah, if, if it's drastically, drastically low, which I think Steve and I sat down and did the math. Oh, he's still down there, welcome Steve. Steve and I did the math, we figured out it'd be like, the market had to go down like thirty percent or something crazy like that for our pension to get underfunded. So yes, it would have to be a drastic, drastic market move for our pension to move to underfunded. So the revenue's in the budget, the expense is in the budget, and ultimately, it is not affect our budget levy wise one way or the other.
It's a note year to date of nine percent.
So we're ma- we're still making money.
Well, I'm trying to use that as an example, if we have excess cash in the last few years here or months, are there things we can either assign, that we can reduce our budget expense, if we reduce the levy, either next year or the following year?
Yeah, I, I think that.
Instead of just kind of letting it accumulate and then assume we're getting, we're still increasing our levy?
No, I, yeah, I mean, I think that's certainly a conversation that I had expected us to have.
If there aren't any things like that, that we could say, hey, we're going to get this extra money that we just do it for this specific item that's an expense next year, that's really not a reoccurring expense, but a one-time expense, that'd be a perfect use for the excess savings that we have for this year. Because it wouldn't affect future budgets and we're not relying on the savings interest.
Correct.
Income. So if there are things like that, I think that'd be a great opportunity to reduce the levy by reducing this budget. I don't know if there are many one-time things.
We don't.
Capital purchases.
We don't have a, in this year's budget, we don't have a lot of one-time expenses.
There's no professional fees for one, one and done things?
I think the, the one, one and done thing we have is the long-term financial plan we put in there. We budgeted thirty-five thousand, knowing what we've gotten for a quote from ABDO. And our, our initial intention anyway, I think we even have it in there, is use of fund balance. So if we remove that, it's not going to affect our levy one way or the other. We'd planned on using fund balance in twenty-four or twenty-five here, the council decided not to do it yet. So it got pushed into twenty-six and just continuing to use that fund balance.
Do you already have that budget as a transfer to pay for it?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, then, a different example, maybe. There's got to be one-time things that are in next year's.
If I comb through it, I don't have any off the top of my head, but I'm sure if I combed, I'd find something.
There's got to be a capital purchase.
Yeah, I, I will, I will get Robin on that.
Well, I too would rather see a number less than five, so that would be a way of getting it.
Okay.
But, but as I said before, I'd rather see the hundred thousand from the building set aside or assigned for debt repayment, so we don't spike that, we can try and get to that time period where the freight department bond part is paid off.
Correct, yeah, we got, I think they were two years out on that.
Yeah, I think twenty-eight.
Yep.
And are we looking, I don't want to, I don't want to jinx things, but are we looking that there's nothing in our future vision here in the next three months that we're going to have to be hit with our, touching our contingency on the fire or the police?
Uh, there's not, there, as we talked about, there is the one outstanding item out here for removing of the, or disposal of the liquid. We did get a final quote, I have to look at for the exact number off the top of my head, but it was less than ten thousand dollars, which is far within our contingencies that we had pointed out there. So at this point, no, like, we don't have any major foreseeable contingencies, we've done most of our groundwork.
Is that the seventy-six hundred that you sent?
Correct. Oh, is that what it was, seventy-six?
That you sent me?
Yeah. So obviously, something could come up, Ken and I were just talking about space debris today. But outside of getting hit by a meteor.
Talk about what?
Space debris. And so I was going to say, outside of like the building getting hit by a meteor and having to do it again, like, I don't even know. Yeah, there are no contingencies, and as we get out of the ground, I think those contingencies become less because now we kind of know what we're working with more.
What's the completion date on that?
Uh, I believe April.
So, I mean, we might have a clearer picture, that would free up a substantial money, money that we're paying for the contingency fund.
Correct.
That would become available for.
Use against the levy.
Fire truck or something.
Or it could be used against the debt payment.
That too.
Because I'm not concerned this year as much, and next year's going to be a concern.
Next year what, or what?
Our budget levy for twenty twenty-seven.
Because of the bond issue?
Yeah.
Well, that really won't hit too much until two thousand and twenty-eight.
First payments will be in twenty-seven.
Is it a total payment of six hundred and sixty or, or half?
I believe that first year, that first twenty twenty-seven is a full six sixty. Yeah, so in twenty, in twenty-six here, in twenty-six here, we have one payment, but it was, we were able to make it with basically our cash that we talked about using. And then so twenty-seven is when the first full payment will hit.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the reduction is, if I remember correctly, the freight department bond is like two hundred something.
Two hundred eighty-six thousand, I think.
Yeah, right around there.
That's where.
In twenty twenty-eight though.
My hope is that we would.
We can get us there.
We could mitigate that over a two or three period and make that, that just bolt to six sixty instead of.
Yeah.
And the first year for the levy would be six sixty and might be three hundred or something.
First year's in twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
So I think what he, I think what he's saying Chuck is basically, if you're able to offset cash twenty-seven instead of increasing it six sixty, you can only increase it three hundred, well, then that gets you to twenty-eight. And now your increase is much smaller because you've got fire station coming.
Right.
And I, I think given that point, I know we've discussed, I think part of that, Robin and I have been working with the auditors on basically some of the fund balance and some of the other debt service funds and where those funds are sitting and how much actually needs to be levied going forward. And so they kind of told us to hold pat as they kind of want to review stuff too, to make sure that we're not, we are seeing what we're seeing, but there certainly may be some funds that we have enough in that we no longer need to levy the amount that we have been levying. And so if you can reduce the levy in other debt service funds, that'll also help absorb some of that cost.
I'm assuming that had a hundred and five percent requirement too.
Correct.
So I don't know the numbers, but there may be money to pay it off early?
Uh, I mean, I think, well, and I think you have to pay it off per the schedule unless they allow for early payoff, which I know some of them don't by this point. But if there's three years left and you only need to levy fifty percent of what you were levying to make those final payment amounts, due just due to the amount in the fund, you can certainly do that and shift to that former levy amount into the new police fund.
I assume you have the ability to call it, I'm assuming we're way past that time period.
Not always, though, we, we asked Ellers about paying some of them off early, and so saying the same thing.
Not part of it.
Yeah.
Right, but so, saying the same thing Josh did, just in different arrangement of words. We just wouldn't have to levy for additional payments if we had surplus funds sitting in a fund balance. We would continue to pay based on the schedule, but we wouldn't need to continue to levy. Like example, if we had payments projected till twenty thirty, but in twenty twenty-eight, we realized we had enough for three or four remaining payments.
Right.
We would just stop levying and still follow the three or four remaining payment schedule. But we wouldn't need to levy for those payment.
So I, I think, I think certainly if we had the money and we could pay it off early, I mean, that's going to save you interest, obviously.
Yeah, you want to just double check that, I mean, it might, a lot of times you have call ability.
Yep.
After ten years, every six months or every year or something. And maybe this one just doesn't allow you to do that, which I'll be, be a little surprised about, but.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why.
Pay the whole thing off.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we kind of started working with Ellers a little bit. Ellers Complete Transparency, it was an add-on package. So we called the auditors and they said, sure, we'll help you out. So we're, yeah, the auditors told us to kind of hold pat so they can look at stuff this year and work with us to make sure that we will in fact have funds that we think are in there. That way we can shift those levy amounts to offset future levies.
It is not a cheap expense to have Ellers do it without giving a full amount, so that's why Josh is saying like in-house and with the auditors, we just want to try to do as much review as we can. And hopefully, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, hopefully flatten that curve for next year.
So all the fund balances, those dedicated fund balances for the different things, are they included when, when ABDO does the?
Yes.
Audit.
If we have enough funds to support, what, fifty percent of our?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so that's all included in that?
Yeah, so if you were to open up the book, it shows all of the audited funds as of.
The calculation they're using is only for the general fund.
Right.
The debt, they're auditing separately and determining, like, our fifty percent fund ban, fund balance policy is for the general fund only.
Correct.
So, yeah, I just want to make sure we're talking.
And then they're auditing each individual enterprise fund.
Correct.
To make sure that they're sufficiently funded too, yeah.
Yeah. So you'll recall, there's sporadic times that I'll have a memo asking for us to close out a project or a bond fund because we either were a little bit short, based on some fees that could have happened, or surplus funds, so. We're trying to stay on top of it all.
Good. You're not going to get that screen door if you don't.
Are there any other questions, I guess?
No.
Comments?
Well, can you get below five percent?
I will look through again and see if we could use any fund balance per se to pay for one-time items.
Or were you considering interest income increasing at all?
Well, I mean, you did a little by eleven thousand, but it kind of throws me for a loop when you, you're sitting at, through August, you got two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Already.
I mean, I guess I'll say from the spreadsheet perspective, adjusting our interest income is a, a quick adjustment versus cutting something else as I'm looking for the one-time things right now.
Because what, do you have to gain twenty-five thousand or something to get below five?
Roughly, yeah.
Or twenty-seven thousand?
And we know we're there, we know that's a, so.
Well, I'm not sure what interest rate on your income you use compared to what you received this year is, but it's certainly going to be.
Yeah, we should be, yeah, twenty twenty-six should primarily still have some of the rates that we were locked in at, at four percent or higher. Right now, we're locking in at like a three point six-ish, higher than mid threes.
That's going out to twenty-eight, right?
Yeah.
I just think you, we should be, I'm a believer, try to be realistic on everything, but to me, ink is, interest income isn't realistic if you're only saying that we're going to make a hundred thousand next year.
Yeah, and like I said, that's where, like, for me, I'm more of an interest income, I'd hate for us to lose it going out, and so we're going to in, increase the levy as the interest goes down because now we're having to account for that.
Right, but each year.
Where we could use it for one-time projects and that sort of thing.
Right, yeah, each year, you know, you, that's an easy number that could be calculated. You know.
It's assumptions, yeah.
You know, because you, you know, you know what it is, you know, if you're locked in for twenty twenty-eight, you should know what your interest income pretty much is for twenty-seven and twenty-eight to.
It just changes a little bit because of how we're allocating with the enterprise funds and cash flow and such. Like, as a whole, we have an idea, but then I think the split is just what changes.
No, I'm not saying, I go totally aggressive, I just thinking to levy something, knowing that you got a material number in there that's not adjusted. You know, I don't know what you think, Bruce, but I mean.
I, I will say, I guess if you guys would like me to raise the interest income, we could safely do it twenty-five thousand without under-budgeting, I will, I will say that. My, my general philosophy would generally be to come to you at the end of the year and say, hey, we have an extra hundred and fifty, and we know we have this project coming up, should we put it towards that project so we don't have to levy for that project in the coming year?
Twenty-five thousand changes the levy to four point nine nine percent, per the mayor's wishes.
Well, you know, I think when you say, try to get in at five percent, gravitate to the low hanging fruit, which is, I'm not sure Chuck meant for you just to look at interest income.
Yeah.
But yes, as I said, we, we will continue to review it to see what kind of one-time projects sitting in there that are affecting the levy, and we have fund balance potentially to use towards them.
The thirty-five thousand for the financial projection.
Yep.
I can't remember, is everybody on board with that?
Didn't we have it in budget this year?
It, it was, it was not in the budget for this year, we'd kind, we brought it forward knowing as we were coming out of stuff and because we had interest income left over from twenty-four to use towards that at the time, and I can't remember the exact reasoning, the council said, hey, oh, I think, I don't even remember why exactly. The council said, hey, let's wait until we do this in twenty-six.
Oh, because of the comp study, we didn't want to put so much on.
Oh.
Robin's plate.
And maybe, and maybe that's what it was, comp study.
We, yeah, you were doing, in the midst of the comp study, we didn't want to get, take you time away from the strategic planning thing. So we said, let's move that on Robin's plate next year.
Correct, yeah, so.
That's, that was the logic that I recall.
And I know talking to, so initially, we'd gotten quotes from both Ellers and ABDO about moving forward. ABDO had actually mentioned, well, if you're going to wait, we'd recommend you wait until after the audit. That way we have clean numbers moving forward in twenty-six with it. So then you'd probably be looking at sometime in Q-two actually doing it. But yes, since we'd, once we'd already planned on using interest income for it this year. But, uh, yes, since we'd, or once we'd already planned on using interest income for it this year, I just use that. Um, kept that same amount for next year and used it out of fund balance.
Okay. Well, I guess what I would, from my perspective, is just everyone take up, all the departments in the general fund, just take a pruse. Is there anything that looks weird or something to lower? The thing, and again, like Bruce says, I mean, yeah, interest income's, you know, those hanging fruit, but. You know, like anything else, is, is there other areas where we can tighten the belt just a little bit, comfortable under five percent, because I think.
Okay.
Just listening from other cities in La Sura County, that's kind of what they're. There are, a lot of them have five-point-four. I think La Sura County's looking at five-point-five. I think Montgomery's in trouble because of their debt payment. I think they're looking at almost sixteen percent. Because if. They're operating, you know, they only went up about one percent, but they have, on their street projects, have some debt finally that they've never had.
Okay.
But.
We will do that.
Just from the other cities in the area, you know, that's kind of what they're looking at, so.
Okay, yeah, we will do that.
And I don't know about, I haven't, the Scott County side, I really don't.
You said twenty-five, uh, twenty-five thousand moves at about how much?
Robin said it moved exactly to four-point-nine-nine.
About half a percent.
Yeah, twenty-five is about that.
Yeah, it's like fifty-three thousand is percent.
I mean, if, if we wouldn't set aside a hundred thousand for trying to mitigate a spike, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supportive of having that in the budget, so that. In my mind, take out a hundred thousand, that's a percentage increase in the levy that I would be comfortable. So if you figure that out, that's.
You mean for the build?
Four-point something.
For the building, you mean?
If you take out that hundred thousand, we'll be down almost two percent.
Right, that is the number I would be comfortable. And I'm not, I'm not joking. I think that, uh, increase in levy should have a relationship, correlation to your. Your net, um, GDP in your state or in our area. And we should try to follow inflation or have a correlation to inflation. So to me, that gets us to that three to four percent. Inflation's coming down even though we're stuck. So, that, that is literally. And like I said, I don't like seeing us being over budget every year, because to me, that means we're over levying. That's just the perspective I have. So two percent seems like a lot, maybe it wouldn't be. That'd be two and three-quarter percent increase or something. Maybe that's a little low, but certainly in the low three something.
So, yeah, I mean, if we took out a hundred thousand dollars, we'd be right around three-point-five percent.
Yeah, that's where I. Now, the compensation study throws a little bit of a bump in the road, so that I understand and agree with that. Has to be dealt with.
Yeah, and it was, I mean, as we've talked, I mean, you've said it too, flattening that curve for twenty-six to. If you take out the hundred thousand this year instead of next year, it does make that bump next year larger. Whereas if you take the, you could redirect that hundred thousand dollars into the police fund, you're helping to flatten out that a little bit. And remove it from the budget, and that would in turn help flatten out next year more, if that makes sense. So basically, you're levying a hundred thousand this year and applying it towards next year's to drop next year's a hundred thousand. And then you can take, if you at that point want to take it out, take out the hundred thousand, and you're really somewhat getting a two hundred thousand, four percent swing next year. By levying that two percent this year. Does that make sense?
I was kind of thinking about other things as you were talking. But I believe you. But, you know, I think we talked about before, you know, years ago, we had our net tax capacity rate at sixty or over, I think.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
Last five years, it's been brought down and.
I mean, I, I think if you go back ten, twelve years, you're looking at the seventies and eighty percent, if I remember right, even seeing some of those numbers, so. I mean, it has come down successfully. I mean, even, what was it, two years ago, we went down ten percent, just two years ago.
And there's an argument that was made by some people that we shouldn't have, we should have levied more to put money aside. For the police station and that, or whatever, but I didn't really follow that or want to see such big numbers. I think we did the right thing by reducing net tax capacity, not doing that.
And.
And I'm changing gears a little bit on this spike issue, just because spiking is a different, different issue to me. That, that's something we can try to address. It's not a long term.
And, and I guess that, that argument of setting money aside is why we started putting that money away, that hundred thousand dollars. Um, of the knowing that we have costs. Is it prudent to sit and wait for those costs to happen and then have to find the money for it? Or is it better to set that money aside so that we don't have to suddenly incur debt that we didn't, may not otherwise have to incur, at least in that amount? And so, I mean, obviously, the hundred thousand dollars isn't gonna buy us enough windows, I believe, to finish out the old part of City Hall, but at least it would, was planned to get us a start there.
So I don't know if it's an order for me to speak, but I have a microphone by me, so you can fix that mistake in the future. Um, just being housed in this building, to Josh's point, um. I don't feel like we're, our intent is to over-budget and like hoard funds from taxpayers, but it's two set aside funds. To use in the case of repairs and deferred maintenance that comes up, so that we don't have a huge spike in the future. Um, I'm not a facility expert, but I do know there's failing structures and aspects of this building if we're gonna try to maintain it. Um, and I feel like it's general knowledge that costs only continue to go up. So if we take out, so this is kind of a statement and a question, if we take out the full hundred thousand. What is our succession plan to fund repairs for this building or what the plan for this building is, without it getting too out of control? That it becomes a big issue. Um, I think in personal lives too, we, we can relate to that. Um, so to get to my question, Bruce, are you looking for, and I understand council probably would want input to. That full hundred thousand to come out, or are you saying? Reduce that line a little, maybe you find some other areas, but I'd like to see a hundred thousand dollars cut from the budget? Or is it a hundred thousand cut from that government building specific?
My, my, my stance would be take the whole hundred thousand out of the budget. I think there's enough funds that the general fund has, if you have a fifty thousand dollar hiccup because your windows got broken or something, it can be managed.
When it's not for the windows getting broken.
If we have a maintenance plan that says, over the next three years, we want to stick hundred fifty thousand dollars or two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand into this building. That's great. Then we're gonna try to have a plan to tackle that. But right now, we, we're still dealing with a facility needs plan that we did three years ago. And we, we're trying to tackle the police station. If we have a formalized plan, I'm all for setting, uh, accreting or setting aside money for it. That's business's due, but.
And.
You know, we have to kind of, in my mind, figure out where our, where our fund balances. Next year, there's a lot of moving pieces until the police station is done, clear out the ambulance fund, that. Uh, chart industry fund, that, you know, maybe that frees up a lot of other money that we can start assigning. And maybe that's where the financial plan really will be helpful, because we got a big fire truck coming up. When you say we need repairs on this building, we had major repairs a few years ago, um, on the roof and that costs a lot of money. But I don't think we have an actual study, who we've done anything, what are the needs of this building, what are we gonna do with this building? What's it gonna look like ten years from now?
Yeah, so, so, so the, yeah, so the, the facility study we had done at the end of twenty-twenty-three did lay out, this is kind of what you need to do to the building. It didn't go into the exact of putting in six new HVACs is gonna cost this, but it did give general estimates as to what needed to be done at the time, what those costs would be, and I think it was around one-point-five million. Now, that being said, respectfully. I'm worried that if we take out the hundred thousand now, we'll get to that point. And whether it is this council or it's a council three or four years from now, they'll go, ah, five hundred thousand, we can't spend that. Like, we, we, we're, we're still paying off a police station and we're paying off this. We can't afford to borrow another five hundred thousand for this. Whereas if we'd been saving that hundred thousand dollars, we'd have that five hundred thousand sitting there. Um, not just to replace a broken window, but to replace all of the windows that are leaking or, um, the new roof or the HVAC, and so. I certainly understand that the desire to reduce the levy, I just know how much of a fight it is to then increase the levy in those years to then make up for that money that you no longer have. Or that you had been saving for and now you, you, you haven't, and so suddenly, instead of having, um, maybe a four percent increase that year, you're looking at an eight or nine percent increase, and people. They don't like that. Like, I, I don't like those high increases either, whereas if we'd been saving for the money at that point, we would have already had that money set aside. And it, it, it's just trying to protect the assets and knowing, not, not knowing what a future council will look like when we actually have to make that formal decision to replace those windows. I know at this point, Matt is looking into exactly, um, what it would cost to get the roofs, the roof done and the windows done and what else we need.
Tuck pointing for the brick was the big one.
And what those would cost, so we can get a formal plan in place going forward of, okay. Do, we're gonna need to talk about, are, are we keeping this building, or I know Wold had talked about knocking down everything from the police station over and keeping kind of the old building here. Um, and what we do that, and I'm just worried if we get rid of that money, it's gonna be a fight to try to get anything done. And that's kind of where my worries come with taking out the hundred thousand.
Yeah, I'm, we can certainly agree to disagree. I'm not sure I would make business decisions on political aspect of the city council. I don't know if that's prudent financial management. I get where you're, I think that's where your. Fear is coming from. But. Five percent increases just seem. Going forward seems to be something we would try to.
Obtain.
You know. We're going two percent over the inflation rate. And, and, um, the economy is not increasing, not expanding. My fear isn't about a hundred thousand dollars. My biggest fear is that our net, our tax capacity goes down. The value of homes goes down, or it doesn't go up. Or we don't have building, or we don't get housing development. Or commercial rents go down. That would be, I, I'm not sure any. Anybody here was involved in the city when the tax capacity went down, like. The twenty years ago substantially?
Two thousand.
You know, when the fire department was built, the, that tax capacity rate went up over sixty percent the next year. Because the values of properties were actually went down, so I, I'm more concerned about trying to manage, thinking about that part of it, but.
And I, I guess I certainly get that, um, but then, as we stated earlier, like, when we get a year where values go up twenty percent, like, do we increase taxes twenty percent to try to main? Because it seems like we're, we don't want our net, and this is where I kind of have, I know we've talked about net tax capacity before, but a little bit of a. I'm more of a, I don't want to say flippant attitude about net tax capacity, but it seems like when the net tax capacity starts going up, we all get worried about it. But if values increase twenty percent and that net tax capacity drops ten percent, we're like, ooh, great, like. And so, we, we don't, we don't adjust it when it goes downwards, but when it starts going upwards, we want to pull it back down. So, I mean, like I said, we, three years ago, we were at fifty-two percent, I believe. Housing values in Scott and La Sura County went up twenty percent, and our net tax capacity dropped to forty-two percent. Okay, it, it, it is what it is. Um, as that next step, but net tax capacity now was starting to creep up, we're like, whoa, we can't cross fifty percent. Why? And I, I, but when I, when I look at other cities, other, the city I came from, our net tax capacity was ninety-nine percent. Like, that's just kind of where it held out at all the time, just kind of maintained it right around that, right around that rate. And it, I mean, it really depends on the makeup of your city, um, but even at ninety-nine percent in that city, my taxes were still half of what they are here. It went fifty percent, so, like, and that's where, like, to me, obviously, you, if, if you gotta have a way to measure taxes against whatnot, but. Really, the taxes are, the val, the value of your property is only the value of your property when you go to sell it. If you're, if you're, if you're living in your property, the value of your property going up, down, left or right, affects your piece of the bigger pie on how Minnesota does their taxes, but if everyone's goes up twenty percent. Does that mean, that doesn't mean the state of Minnesota raises our taxes. We have to explain that to people every single year. It just means that. Your imaginary number went up twenty percent, just like your neighbors did.
Well. Net tech, tax capacity. It's. The growth in actually new construction and new value is more important, and that's been growing.
That's fair.
And that's, um, fair game in my mind, as far as looking at increasing tax revenue from that more than just the value. The value is, is what throws a big curve. We have a big, and I'm not suggesting this is happening or anything like that, but if you would have a big drop in value. I'm sure any city council is gonna think about, okay, we gotta cut expenses and significantly. Because individual. People are gonna have substantially higher property taxes the next. I mean, if we have a big.
I, I mean theoretically, if everybody's value dropped the same, we'd all have the exact same taxes.
No, because our levy is the same, you have much more taxes.
Well, I mean, your, your, your tax rate would be higher, but if, if everybody's property dropped fifty percent, you still have the exact same taxpayers within the pool. Now, instead of having a fifty percent tax rate, you'd have a seventy-five percent tax rate, but your bill would be exactly the same because we have the exact same number of payers. Taking up the exact same proportion in the pool, and so. Even if, if my, the value of my property dropped fifty percent, but so did everybody else's, we're all paying the exact same taxes the next year, assuming everything stays the same.
Yeah, I think you have a good point. What I'm trying to get more is where the commercial affects more than anything else, because in the last recession, commercial property probably went down. And residential might not have been affected. We did have a recession where the residential went down significantly, and the piece of the pie changed quite a bit.
Correct.
And that's where you run into a big difference.
And, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, if, if, if only the commercial drops, I think the residential payers are gonna hit, get harder. If it's the residential that drops and the commercial doesn't, that actually would be advantageous for the residential, um, buyers. Like, I, I can agree with that.
Right.
But we will certainly review it for kind of the one-time expenses and to see what we can find in there.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I think I read too many.
All right, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Seconded by Maggie. All in favor of German? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, we're out of here. Thank you, everyone, for staying.
I didn't know.